All right, it is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting in order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by council member, first one?
I'll second.
And a second by council member, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, nobody is here for community comments. There are no presentations and reports. There are no public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member, Ross?
I'll second.
Second by council member, Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, rolling right along to business items, the 2024 Community Survey. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a follow-up from your February 5th work session where Peter Leatherman with the Morris Leatherman Company presented a draft of the 2024 Community Survey. Based on the comments the council provided, you have a proposed final draft of that questionnaire, which you can consider for adoption. Just a little bit of background on our community survey was first done in 2020 as the initiative of the city's strategic plan. The council was asked at that time to facilitate a process where that was, survey was done every three years. Anecdotally, it was interesting just to hear Peter talk about the, I didn't really think of it until he mentioned it, but the city lasted its survey in March of 2020 and we all know what happened shortly thereafter. I will note that the budget remained the same even with the question changes that the council asked for. But again, happy to review any questions about the overall process and then take any feedback the council has regarding the questionnaire for the survey. Thank you.
All right, anybody have questions? Should we go through it page by page? It looks like you've got some jot of done.
Yeah, I've just got a couple.
Yep, okay, let's go through it. Page one, I don't have anything. Stop me if you do. Page two, I don't have anything. Page three for number 27. I was just looking at it. I thought that the dollar amounts were kind of weird when we're asking what's your tolerance to pay in additional property taxes, like four, eight, thirty-two. Do we want it to be more even numbers, two dollars, five dollars, ten dollars, fifteen dollars?
I like that better. I also just seem, these numbers seem a little irrelevant in the way we kind of think about money.
Yeah.
Two, five, ten, fifteen seems a little more.
Can we ask Peter about that? If he has a reason for those?
I would, I would just offer that if you change them, then the data that you collected in 2020.
Okay, that's exact, that's what we had in 2020, okay.
Okay, and I'm fine with that. Anybody else on page three? Page four. On questions thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four, I would like to see the word drinking struck from those questions. I don't think we refer to our water as our drinking water. Because we shower in it and we wash clothes with it. I just think, just city water. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. How about between thirty and thirty-one, what is the percent that we're going to put in there? For your information, the city of Carver receives
Blank percent.
I think that's something that Brent will figure out.
Okay.
Peter on?
What question are you on, sorry?
That's between thirty and thirty-one. For your information, the city receives blank percent of your total property taxes, because we asked, what do you think the percentage is?
Yeah, we'll get that number updated and sent to the council.
All right. Page five.
I have one for thirty-nine. It's the open-ended question. So it said, are there types of developments you would like to see in the city? We don't obviously have a dollar amount we can put with this. Do we want to add anything that talks about if there was unlimited funding or anything like that, or just what we want to see? Because a lot of people, I mean, we can want a lot of things, but is it real, is, are we going to get realistic information if somebody says they want the superdome here? I mean, do we, you know, regardless of price or considering?
I'm okay without putting any guardrails on it, but I don't know that we I don't know, I'm just trying to think that through. I don't know that if we say regardless of price, then is everybody going to say the next Vikings stadium that they'll need another ten years or, you know? Go ahead, Brent.
I just offered the council, so like, the development in this context isn't anything the city pays for, so like the, like the you know, in most cases, the city, much less like residents, wouldn't have any idea what the price of like an investment in a super target or superdome will be. So it's more of a, do you want a grocery store, or would you oppose a Target or a Walmart or whatever? I think that's traditionally what you've been trying to glean from that question, but for a private development project, I'm not sure how much price, how much information really any of us have regarding that.
Sure, and I'm fine. I just wanted everyone to be okay with that one.
Oh, you still going on that page?
Uh, I'm still on that page, yep. Forty-one, so when we're talking about supporting or opposing financial incentives, we don't really say what those might be. Do we purposely want those that open? I mean, when we just say financial incentives, I don't know what we could put there. I don't know if anyone had any thoughts when they were reading that.
Is that not another one that we asked four years ago?
Probably did most of them. I'm not afraid, I'm not opposed to tweaking things to make, you know, but if everyone's good on this one, I just, some of these were so pie in the sky that I just want to
we're going to include them. I want to make sure we're getting our dollars' worth for the information.
Right.
Do you want to include an example there of something we do? So people
Yeah, but we're not going to be able to explain TIF in a
Yeah. I'm just thinking, if I'm going through this perfectly, you know, my mind's not going to go to, well, what could the city be doing?
Yep. Do we need to put, because that's through our, through our taxing and funding, do we put it that way? Like, what does this incentive look like? Or is it find the way it is? Just thinking, people say, oh yeah, these financial incentives, let's get super target here, but then what they don't realize is you know, how, are you asking us to subsidize that? How does that look? So do we call out that, do you support or oppose the city providing financial incentives through possible taxing and funding strategies or whatever that wording is? Or we leave it alone?
I'm okay with leaving it alone. I don't, I worry that the explanation and getting into that requires just too long of a question. Eric, were you saying something?
I'm trying to No, I'm not.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm good. Okay.
My question was, between question thirty-seven and thirty-eight, we say that if the answer to thirty-seven is strongly support or support, then we ask question thirty-eight.
My question is, why are we only asking those who support or strongly support it? Wouldn't we want to hear from everybody?
I don't think there's any reason we can't ask everybody. I mean, if that's something that you're looking at, I mean, I under, I, I can see why it only goes that way, because if you don't support reducing the speed limit, then why would you support funding?
But I think inversely too, like if you support it, then maybe you would, the assumption could be that you would support it.
I'm fine if we make that a, a full question and not contingent on strongly support or support.
I halfway feel like Peter might say there's a reason for it, and if there is, I'm fine for it, fine with it. This isn't the hill I want to die on, but I'd like to ask the question.
How do you want that reported back to you? Because we'd have to wait till the next? But do you do you want to make a change based on something? Because I you'll give a reason, but then you can't, as a council, act on that reason until your March 4th meeting, if you like it or support it? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I would rather have this done the way we want it and not approve it tonight, because we want, we need more, we need something more. If that's where we're going, then push through to approve it. Feeling like we're not getting all the answers that we're looking for.
I mean, just from, and I, I would agree with council member Mark on that point. I would say universally, if someone doesn't support raising or lowering the speed limit, the question, not as far as investment, is irrelevant.
Yeah.
I feel, if we just move it to it, I am fine with it being a full question too.
I remember when we talked about this, and I feel like number thirty-eight is almost more of an educational, where if you support the decrease in speed limit, it doesn't come free.
Right.
So it's, it feels
Yeah.
Our intention might have been more just as an educational.
Okay, I, I'm fine with only asking those who support or support it. I, I think just though as we're assuming that if you don't support it, you're not going to support the funding. I think it's stacked a little bit, but if you do support it, you're probably more than likely to support.
Yeah, so I think, I think we should move it back to a full question. I mean, this is our survey.
Yeah.
I think that it should be whether you strongly oppose, I mean, we're going to, if you strongly oppose, chances are you're going to say no, but then we've got all of the people saying all of the answers.
Personally, I don't want it that limit, but I would support paying for it because other
Yeah, so now I'm going back. I think, yeah, I think Peter can slice the data so that we get the results based on the folks who support it or strongly support it, and then he can also slice it so that we get everybody.
I agree with you. I think we should have it as a full question, not as a contingent one.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, anything else on page five? Page six. I know we talked about this, but for forty-nine, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Still struggling with affordable housing defined as a single-family home costing less than three hundred and three oh four seven. When every definition that we have at the city level is that affordable housing means multifamily and there's very little available for that price point in 2024.
Yeah, and I thought we had
You go ahead.
Oh, I just, I thought that we had come to a different decision than this question.
Yeah, I'm surprised to see affordable on there.
Or the number or something. We had talked extensively on this one. I don't, this one doesn't seem like maybe it got changed.
Recollection, what, my recollection was that you just wanted the number updated.
Is that what it was?
I think like, instead of affordable median, or just kind of a
I think, the reason affordable was being, because there's a, there's an inclination to think affordable means a subsidized home, where we were going back and forth between those definitions and how how that would be viewed as someone asking, like, is, do I, you know, does someone's, I should say, I do, does somebody's natural inclination go to thinking it's subsidized? Or affordable means it's within a median, and that, talking about median incomes can be kind of situational to us, because we're used to talking about that.
So that, and they're being asked, is there too many, too much, too little? Maybe we just, just start off with a single-family home costing less than roughly three hundred and five thousand dollars.
But I can tell you right now that there aren't, there aren't enough of those, like, it literally doesn't exist.
Yeah. Do you want that question? Can we just get rid of it?
It doesn't, yeah.
Let me just read this really quick here.
So it's continued from the previous question, right?
I can't remember what Peter said, because like, something about affordable, he used affordable housing because he didn't want to use subsidized housing.
But he was, it's really just single-family home.
Yeah, I don't think that I want to have it taken out, because I think here too is probably one of those questions that we asked four years ago, so we're using it to measure
So starter homes, so when I look at this, when I'm, as I'm reading through this again, so affordable, so when I'm looking at defined as a single-family home, to me, that and that, that price point of three oh four seven is not that's not a sticking point. To me, that screams the starter homes line. So we've got starter homes, and then does this affordable housing
Just full stop?
Just a full, yeah, just to stop at affordable housing and let the starter home be the single family.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Does anybody else disagree with making that change?
So that is Excuse me, I just looked up your survey from 2020. The question was affordable housing defined as a single-family home costing less than two hundred and twenty thousand. So the change was the number to, from two twenty to three oh seven, so however you want it.
I don't know that we're gleaning the right information from that, from this.
The number, yeah, having the number in there seems because like Courtney said, it doesn't exist, does?
Yeah.
Or rarely, I mean, it's going to be a rare find, but
And we're truly, if we're asking the starter homes, that's one category.
I think so.
But I don't think we're asking about that affordable housing component.
I don't see it anywhere else, really.
Yeah, I think I would like to see it just say affordable housing, question mark.
Yeah, I
I agree.
Yeah.
Because the answer might be rental apartments, which is a different question, but makes them think about it in a different way.
Sure.
Yeah. All right, page seven.
Yes. I had that, I had fifty, the number fifty-six written down, and I'll take a peek at it when we're talking about something else. So seventy-four. When I was looking through this, so this is obviously a pretty hot one for me. So the transportation service with Southwest, Southwest Prime, great. Local on-demand Southwest Prime. So we've got finding for the purpose. So bus, does this need to be a little more clear? So we've got bus transportation service with Southwest Transit and local on-demand. So I'm just thinking of you know, Citizen Joe who gets this call, are they going to immediately be able to differentiate that without any little more?
So it's called a coach bus in MetroCard. Do we want to?
I think maybe one more descriptor word in there, whatever, if it's coach, because
Seventy-two?
Seventy-two and seventy-three. I just
So there's a whole paragraph above a seventy-one that describes
Oh, there, okay.
Yeah.
So that's your narrative there.
Okay, so as long as the narrative's there.
Yeah.
Sure, that works then. A number seven, so I'm good with seventy-two and seventy-three then, because the, the narrative's above it. Seventy-four, so it said, would you still support the use, would you still support the use of city funding for Southwest? Do we want it to say, wordsmith would say, would you continue to support? Because
No, because we're asking about their support from question seventy-two or seventy-three.
Right.
I know what you're saying, but I don't think that this is a measurement of if they know that the city's subsidizing it or not.
Sure.
But that's a big part of this, is that most of the people, I shouldn't say most, there's a good number of people who don't realize that the city pays for that. They think it's just the service that comes and that five dollars covers it.
I agree, but I think otherwise, we're again trying to be educational. And telling, informing them, where it's really just trying to solid the, solid, uh, solid information.
Okay, so then maybe it's the if, if it costs the city, so, because it does cost the city twelve dollars, so maybe it's the word if.
As you may or may not know, it does cost the city.
Yeah, no, really, because the if, that's a question like, oh, in the future, it could cost us, so let's get the if.
Because?
Do you still support the use of city funding for Southwest City Prime, comma?
As it costs, it does, because it does.
Because it costs the city, and I think we should put twelve dollars or more, because isn't twelve dollars what it costs right now today, and it could cost more?
Yes, because it, because it does cost the city of Carver twelve dollars.
Yeah. Okay, so would you still support the use of city funding for Southwest Prime because it costs the city of Carver twelve dollars or more for every Southwest Prime ride?
Works for me.
Sure.
I'm not married to the word because
Me either.
Whatever gets it.
Yep.
Okay, what are you trying to, what are you trying to communicate?
The if does not sound like solid enough, definite enough to say that we, that is what you're getting charged now.
Yeah.
So that will help people understand that it's not, if it costs the city of Carver, it does cost the city of Carver. So that may be what it is.
Or it costs the city of Carver twelve dollars for every Southwest Prime ride. Do you still support the use of city funding?
That's a better structure.
You want it to be present tense, set it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I don't want it to be if, because it does.
So do we all like that last, it costs the city of Carver twelve dollars for every Southwest Prime ride?
Yes.
Do you still support the use of city funding?
Yeah, switch the order, basically. I'll just ask him to rewrite it in present tense. I'm a little anxious about crafting it, knowing that he's kind of the expert in making sure it doesn't have bias in it.
But you could say that our, our preference with his words, is that it, it changes to it costs the city of Carver. Let him know that way, and if he finds that to be unbiased, then use that format. We do need to take the if out, period. Like, that has to come off.
Okay, I have a question here.
Yeah.
So we're asking the question about the subsidy. Do we inject a question about future taxation district here? So do we say, in lieu of a city subsidy for Southwest Transit, would you support a line item tax for all residents to expand service and reduce costs for riders? Because that's potentially in our future, do we ask it here?
Tell me a little more about future, like, when are we thinking then?
So, so right now, we're not in the taxation district, which is why we pay a subsidy and it's going to keep going up. We've had the discussion at transit meetings that should Carver want to become part of that, and there's some, you know, there's dollars coming from license plate registrations and all of this. We're not sure what it looks like, but if we do it, if Carver was part of that, like Eden Prairie or Chaska, that would likely mean an expansion of service, because we have pretty limited service now. And it would mean that in Eden Prairie, you paid four bucks for prime, the city pays nothing, because they're part of that taxation district.
I think it's maybe a little too premature to ask that question. I worry that we still need to wrap our collective brains around that and what that means and what guarantees there are and what it doesn't mean. I think we could, you weren't on council, we didn't, Eric weren't on council, and we did considered franchise fees, but we did a really public process of, you know, and I think we can do that in lieu of having this question, because I worry that that's another than one that requires a lot of description and discussion, other than
Well, it's going to be a big deal if we decide that there's an appetite to expand public transit for Carver. So we should ask the question at some point, if the next survey is what, three years? So Are we
Twenty twenty-seven, sorry.
I guess the question is, are we planning to wait that long before we consider this and ask that question?
For me, Eric, I don't even know, to ask that question, to, to, are we willing to wait that long? I don't even know the parameters, really, of what that looks like for what it will cost us. Is it something the city could even entertain at this point with what we have going on? I don't know that I have enough information that if people say yes, I don't know what that means. I don't think it's, I mean, I like that you want to get ahead of it. I just don't
And I don't think that because it's not a question on this survey, it doesn't mean we can't address it until 2028. I think, again, like the franchise fee thing, we can solicit public feedback and have public, you know, we always have public meetings, but
Good.
There are other ways to engage and to take the temperature of our community.
That's why I asked.
Did you find your fifty-six yet?
Uh, no.
Okay. Page nine. Page ten. Page eleven. Page twelve. Number fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Which is on page?
Which is on page six. Or seven, depends what you're looking at. Paper-wise, it's six.
Thank you.
Um, yep. How would you rate the park and recreation facilities in the city of Carver? When I think of facilities, I think of physical buildings. Are we looking for our park amenities here?
Is this another one that's verbatim from 2020? Because maybe people are thinking facilities would be basketball courts and
Yeah, when I see parks I see what you're saying. I picture parks versus if you were to say programs or
Right, but for me, when I, just for, when I hear facilities, and again, of course, of course, with the background in this, I think a little bit differently. I think like, the, the gym, the, you know, a physical facility
Agree.
rather than a park amenity, which could be the new skate park of Ironwood, so
Do you want to just change the word?
I would be fine with that if we think that
Did we ask it?
It's up to, up to the council, but yes, it's a verbatim question. It's question fifty-four from the 2020 survey is how would you rate park and recreation facilities in Carver?
You think amenities is better? Okay, good, so do I. Okay, we'll change that word to amenities then from facilities.
Skew the data.
I wonder, though, is amenities, I don't know, like, they have certain, like, grade level reading, but like, if it should be something more basic, like programs? I guess if he has a different suggestion, I would take what his suggestion is.
I don't know that when we were working with him, he ever said like, that's too big of a word.
Okay. Yeah, and you know, when we refer to them a lot, and it's when we, our ratings go out to the public, the word amenities is often used before facilities.
Okay. Um, and then just, I had a resident reach out and say, I don't answer my phone if I don't know the number. How is that dealt with? So would you be able to ask Peter and just say if I'm picked for this and I'm not answering my phone, do you
He did say they leave a voicemail.
Or you leave a voicemail, okay.
Yeah, I remember him saying they leave a voicemail.
Okay.
But, good, get into
Yeah.
Recheck.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a general question.
Yep.
How do we, how do they deal with survey fatigue? I get fifty-two questions in and I say, you know what, I got to get back to dinner. Is that survey thrown out, or is any part of it used towards the fore?
I believe he'll try and call them back later and see if there are better time and get back to them.
That's how it's handled. And if it's not completed, it's not included, correct?
We didn't get into those, but I can ask that question.
Did you hear the part about how he hires grandmothers?
I did hear that, yes. So, but I mean, if, are those four hundred surveys complete, or do we, are they using partial surveys because of that? It's just something I wanted to ask in the work group. Okay, that's it.
All right.
Can I, can I review what you have?
Yeah.
So I have question thirty, update the, the number as it relates to percentage of property tax. Question thirty-two, strike the word drinking. Question thirty-nine.
Thirty-three, too.
And thirty-four. It would be all those drinking, right?
Yep, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four.
Questions thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four, strike the word drinking. Question thirty-nine, make that a full question, not contingent.
It's thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, the speed limit.
But I think thirty-nine is the follow-up, no?
No, it's changing topics.
Thirty-nine is
Sorry, question thirty-eight, add full question, or, yeah. Question forty-nine, strike everything after affordable housing. Questions seventy-four, eliminate the word if and make it a present tense question. Question fifty-six, use the word amenities, strike the word facilities. Ask follow-up questions related to, what's the process related to if someone doesn't answer their phone? And ask a question related to what's done with partial surveys? Is that
Mm-hmm.
Complete?
Yep.
Yeah, I want to know if partial surveys are included in the formal results. We'll get back.
So I'm comfortable making a motion to approve the questionnaire with the edits that we just discussed and accept the proposal from the Morris Leatherman Group to conduct the 2024 Community Survey for twenty-two thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson, second by council member Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Communications. Reports?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a follow-up from the work session, the 2024 Parks Maintenance Budget is sixty-five thousand for 2024.
I'm sorry, sixty-five thousand?
Sixty-five thousand.
All right, updates.
I've been absent for a couple weeks, no updates.
Okay, Lori?
Um, there is a Carver County Leaders Meeting on this upcoming Tuesday, Lori? Um, there is a Carver County Leaders Meeting on this upcoming Tuesday, Lori. They're gonna talk about cannabis and just, you know, what, what are we learning? Are there any decisions made at the state level and how the county? Kind of what information they have that, that you know, that they can make some decisions on.
Next Tuesday, we have a special meeting with the HPC. They'll be reviewing the presentation we just saw about. The Scott County and Carver County Trail across the river. It is at five P M, is that correct? Because we have to be done at six, because it's caucus evening. And will we meeting, are we meeting right here, in the council chambers? That's all I have.
I guess I'm next. So we had a planning commission meeting last Thursday. We reviewed the preliminary plot for Carver Place, so it was unanimous. Um, and then as a side note, we'll have a new commission members, I think we'll have a total of four brand-new people regardless, so it should be, should be nice to get some new people involved. That's all I have.
All right, I have a bunch of updates. Was anybody able to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Preview Webinar? It was a good one. Lots of good stuff coming. Fixing the SRO stuff that we saw so much about in the news in September. I will send to Brent to send to you guys, there is some local control stuff as far as zoning that's going through, that's kind of terrifying. That would really bind our hands, that the league is advocating hard on, but is asking members. Who are willing to reach out to their folks to send letters and to talk to their legislators about this, so.
Can you elaborate at all on, I mean, I don't wanna take hours, but if there's any snippet of what that means?
Taking a look at my email, but if you give me just a second here, I can find it. So it is House File two thousand nine, Senate File thirty-nine sixty-four, and the statement, let's see, let me find something better here, let's see, if you give me just a second. Two bills that will broadly preempt a myriad of aspects regarding city zoning and use, land use authority. These bills allow multifamily dwellings to potentially be up to a hundred and fifty feet in height in a large areas of a city not reasonable, isn't. It's not a reasonable change. Buildings of that size and density of that magnitude carry a host of firewater, sewer, and emergency response, stormwater, and neighborhood impacts, so. Like, you might be thinking like I am, well, Courtney, we're never gonna have a one hundred and fifty-foot building in the city of Carver, at least while I'm sitting on this side of the case. But this is a statewide, one-size-fits-all solution that the folks in St. Paul wanna push through. So Carver could. If we have a developer who wants to put a fifteen-story building. In what's a farm field right now.
Right, then we're also on the hook for having a fire department that can reach that, which means new fire equipment on top of that.
And we can't do anything about it, the community can't provide any feedback on it. If this becomes a one-size-fits-all mandate, so it's, it's that kind of thing, and like, I'll forward you the emails, it's like just enough to like scare the bejesus out of you, but. It's got me pretty worried. So, um, this might be a, let's really talk to folks, let's send some emails kind of thing, but I'll start forwarding to Brent. We can do that, right? I forward to you, you can distribute, okay.
Really quickly, so that means when you say one-size-fits-all, that means Roseau, Minnesota?
Yes.
Could have a hundred and fifty.
Can be Minnesota, Duluth, where maybe it would fit and maybe that would be fine, but yes, like Cologne. Watertown, Meyer, New Germany, like one-size-fits-all.
Okay.
So, um, again.
How does that supersede local control, I still?
Because it is a state law.
State law.
So.
I understand.
We have, I think for as long as I have been sitting up here, one of our legislative priorities have always been maintaining local control. And we don't spell out for zoning and land use kind of things like this, but I think we feel pretty strongly. And trying to say this without, you know, maintaining a sense of humility, but we know our community really, really well in the city of Carver. I'm leery that, you know, in this case, it's a state representative from St. Louis Park. Not sure that he's ever been out to the city of Carver. Don't think he knows our community in the same way that we do, or. Or Watertown, or Cologne, or New Germany, you know, like it's these one-size-fits-all don't work, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I will forward that tonight. Let's see, uh, February seventh was the Chaska Library's a hundred and first anniversary. It was a lovely celebration, really cool to hear some of the history. Even more so, the highlight of that event was meeting Mr. and Mrs. Perschmann. Eric, um, Mrs. Perschmann was the librarian who was on duty the night of the fire at the Chaska Library, which is probably a story you've heard a million times, but she told me, and it's fascinating, like. The library had a really significant fire, and she got everybody out, and.
She was around for most of half of the hundred years.
Wow, fantastic. So I took a selfie with Eric's dad and sent it to him just to scare him a little bit, what we were talking about when he was abroad.
Oh, Eric, you were not there?
No.
Courtney's taking all that picture with your parents.
I was a little warded side when I heard that, but.
Let's see, we had a Carver County Leaders Meeting, that's the school districts, the cities, four cities, and then the county, um, where we hosted here on February ninth. I had my mayor's office hours on February tenth, had a good decent turnout for that. If you haven't heard, our superintendent, Belisa Sales Adams, is now our former superintendent. She left for the Minneapolis School District, and we had. Brent and I, and really everybody who comprises of that community leaders group, had a meeting with the firm that's doing the superintendent search committee and kind of. Had the opportunity to say what our unicorn superintendent would look like, so, um, really cool to share that with them. Had a League of Minnesota Cities Board Meeting last week. Last Friday was the SWCTC, the Southwest Quarter Transportation Commission Meeting in Norwood, Young America. They are working on big, big projects, including Highway Five, and got to see a preview on that, and then I always forget, eighty-second Street, eighty-sixth Street, eighty-fourth Street in Chaska, eighty-something. Let's see.
Eighty-second.
Is it eighty-second?
I'm pretty sure.
Let's see, uh, yesterday I recorded a Living in Carver County podcast with Greg Anderson. Few more miscellaneous things. We had our first snowfall in this, of the season, the day after Valentine's Day. I thought, uh, Public Services did a really great job. I went to their morning meeting this morning, and I told them my barometer is always if I get calls or not, or emails, and I didn't get any, so, uh, I think they did a, a great job. Um, and then I think finally, and to, to close out the meeting on a really somber note, I think I would be remiss if I didn't share that our thoughts. Go out to everybody in Burnsville and everybody who was touched by the lives of police officers, Paul Amstrad, Matthew Rugi, and firefighter, paramedic, Aaron, or Adam Finseth. So, um, really, really tough event there on Saturday, and I think. As leaders and as community members and as folks who are well-involved in our community, I think it's probably human nature to put yourselves in their shoes and just. With that, and unfortunately, to end on a really somber note, I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Welsh.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Perschmann. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes, good evening.